I want to call our regularly scheduled meeting to order. If you'll all stand and join us for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for being here tonight. Can we get a roll call?
Mr. Chair, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Do we have any changes to the agenda?
We are removing action item D, considering an administrative recommendation to adopt a policy as some of the directive from the board makes that need to be tabled for a little bit.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? Hearing none, we'll adopt that change. The consent agenda tonight includes approving the minutes from the September ninth, twenty twenty-five board meeting, consider payment of bills, including night pays, and preauthorization of payroll, insurance, utilities, officials, and automatic payments, and consider a comprehensive review of all currently district sanctioned clubs, as well as any newly submitted club proposals prior to the finalization of the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year budget.
Would move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That will be adopted. The roundtable tonight, we have the Aspen School update from Mr. McBride.
Wow, this is fancy. I love it.
It's red, huh?
Yeah.
Stands right out.
Yeah, so, and just checking, do I just push this here to move it forward, or somebody else said? What's that? Push the here, okay? Okay, okay, perfect. All right, well, thank you. So, the first thing I want to start off with and talk about is this symbol that we have for Aspen Elementary. I want to start with the very bottom here, where teamwork makes the dream work, and that's something I firmly believe in, that to be successful, we have to work as a unified team. That's the foundation of this structure. And the next piece of it, the individual skills and talents and abilities, when I look at that, I'm looking at two things. One, I'm looking at the teachers, their individual talents, skills, and abilities, but that's coupled with the individual talents, skills, and abilities of our kids, what they bring in. And that's going to play into all of our four pillars here, the one being creativity, the things that kids are interested in, kids want to know, and their own abilities, unique. Each of those individual abilities, that is a key part of this structure, what they bring. And then also the teachers, what they bring and can contribute to the kids. The second pillar being executive functioning. That's a skill of, such as tonight, planning to get here tonight, we had to go through a lot of steps that we just take for granted as adults. But these are things that have to be explicitly taught to kids. And some kids naturally develop it, and some kids struggle with it, and it takes a little bit more time for them to develop. And so that's a key skill we want kids all to have, is how do they organize their time? How do they plan for the future? How do they plan for things like homework? And so they can schedule things out and feel a little more confident and not as stressed because they're able to play out their day. The next piece is unity. Our unity within our staff, but also the students working together in small groups. It's part of collaboration, communication, those pieces that are going to help our kids to be successful. And the last piece on this pillar is ownership. Ownership of the facilities, ownership of ourselves, ownership of the work that we do. So, for instance, one of the things that we've taken on is, if we make a mess, we clean it up. We don't leave it for someone else to come back behind and do the cleaning, right? So, when it comes to lunchtime, the kids are responsible for cleaning their tables. We get those all cleaned up. They do a pretty good job, and then our custodians come in and finish the rest. But it's that part, and you know the thing that's unique about it is they love it. They love taking on that ownership, and they love helping out. So, sometimes we do have a few tears shed because who was considered, okay, this is the one who was assigned to clean the tables, and wait a second, that was my turn, you know? So, they are excited to do it. And so these pillars build us to the point where we want all of our kids to be. When they move on from Aspen onto the middle school, we want them to be independent, to be able to have the basic skills that they need so that they can be successful going from class to class to class, managing their time, managing their assignments, and then taking on new challenges, such as sports or other activities that they'll be involved in. There's a lot for them to take on, and we want to prepare them for that. So this is a couple of things that we have, just wanted to throw in a few pictures. The first couple of small pictures here with the kiddos, that was our kinder camp before school got started. They did a phenomenal job, and I think it's worth every minute. That kinder camp helps get the kids established in the building, know the routines. So when they come, they're confident. They know what's happening, and they're usually, bye mom, bye dad. So, and then a little bit of our open house. So a few more pictures of our open house, the classrooms that were set. We have some of the kids pretty excited, getting started for the new year to start. So some of my goals, things I want to do is strengthen our classroom instruction, and so do professional development. Whenever we have a staff meeting, I want a big part of that staff meeting to be professional development. What are some of the things we're focusing on? What are the things that we're going to do and improve on in our classroom? So we have that every other week. Establish and maintain a win program. That is our absolute focus, and of getting that program established so we can identify the things that kids need and address those right away, fill in the gaps as they go, and as we get this thing moving, then it's going to be a shorter and shorter amount of time to respond to the kids' needs. So, the other part is building communication, collaboration, critical thinking, and creativity through a program called Explore. Each of the teachers have a part of their day where kids have the opportunity to explore different things that they're interested in. And I'll show a couple of pictures of those. It could be robotics. It could be something literature-based that they're interested in. It could be, you know, a development. So, some of our kids, you know, and even speaking of my own son, they get into things that are way, way above their head, but they're super excited about it, and they work their tails off to try to figure it out because they want to. They want to know it. And so that's one of the parts and the pieces of Explore is taking kids to the next level. And then establishing a guiding coalition so we can build our culture and climate within our school, have that open communication with our staff so that we can share and generate ideas. We want to be a united force as we're working together. So a couple of our, here's our instructional coaches. I put their pictures in. They've been doing a phenomenal job. They're taking on the win program and getting that established, getting all of the testing done, organizing groups, getting, the big part of what they're doing is, some of the things that slow down the win program is having all the planning. You have, right now, we're looking at one time period, and say we have fourth and fifth grade. We have the three teachers for fourth grade, two teachers for fifth grade, and then we have five paras in there. So when you put all of them together, that's a lot of planning that has to happen, and they've done a phenomenal job of putting kits together so it's not just sit and get, but it's actually games and activities that they're doing. So phenomenal work. So, as far as accountability for when, we have our students have been assessed, and groups have been mated, and we've got started with our instruction. I've walked through today, and it was, it was great to see the kids engaged, going to the different places in small groups and learning each of the different basic skills that they have holes in that they need to be addressed. So, here's some pictures of our Explorer. Kids were using the Lego robotics. The one on the far, this is my far right, he made a device that'll clamp down on your hand so you can do a handshake. The girls were working together to build theirs. They were just getting started. Then we have some kids doing some physical activity, stretching and so on in the class so they can do different muscles that they're looking at. So Explore can go from health, you know, be a science thing, it could be just about anything. So, a couple more pictures of the robotics that's happening, so. And that is my presentation. Do we have questions?
That's exciting to see kids exploring new things and starting that young.
Yeah.
Getting that bug young.
Yeah, thank you.
Being able to, you know, utilize, like you said, their critical thinking skills and develop, you know, there's that robotic hand that you were talking about, and that encourages that, and wellness. I like that that's a part of it, too. I probably need to come down and partake of that class. Maybe I could become a little bit more limber.
Anytime, we'd love to have you.
I don't know. Yeah.
So how do you like it?
How do I like Aspen?
Yeah.
I love Aspen.
Good.
Phenomenal building, staff, students. We have a lot of fun. Most times I can be out there greeting the kids in the morning, high fiving, and we just love it. And so that's one of the things, I went to classroom to classroom. Instead of a big assembly, I went from classroom to classroom to meet each of the kids and said, you know, when you see me, just stop and give me a high five, or, you know, a fist bump or something, and we usually have a few of them that are fist bumping. So, we have a good time. I love it.
That is good.
Thank you.
Well, welcome.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Yeah, we haven't heard anything bad, so.
All right. That's good.
Good way to put it. Yeah.
Thanks for doing what you're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to board members and staff. Jada, we'll start with you tonight. I know you've got lots to tell us.
I don't have anything.
Oh, come on.
Thanks, Jada. Terry, are you?
Oh, okay.
I'm thinking might.
Yeah, watching YouTube, watched a lot of football. That was great. That game Friday night was awesome. And then participated in the education that was on the meeting. What was that, Thursday?
Yeah, Thursday.
Thursday at noon. That was very interesting. Learned the history of our education in Wyoming. It's awesome. And then on the Tonkin Committee, I left a, one of the gals drafted up what they come up with, what they would like to see done with the Tonkin funding. And so I let that go around, and you can read what they've come up with, and we can see where we can go with that. They wanted to do a little bit more than just a small area. And so I let them kind of make up some of their ideas, and we'll see what happens, put it on the agenda for maybe next meeting. That's all I got. Thank you.
Terry?
I don't have anything this evening.
Terry, Lynette?
Our Northwest BOSI's meeting will be tomorrow evening. Just lots of things going on there. Our IT was in pretty rough shape, and we're getting that fixed up and making sure that all of our information and data is safe. It kind of slipped away, which kind of happens sometimes when things don't stay in the forefront. So, we're working on that, and other than that, I don't have a whole lot. Mr. McBride, thank you for being here tonight. We're glad to have you in the district.
Thank you. Lori?
I was in the fall series as well. I agree. That was interesting to hear about the background of education in Wyoming and why it's so important to us in the state. And then I ventured off into a little bit of the legislative session that they had online for some of the committee meetings, and that was very interesting to listen in on some of those, so it'll be probably another interesting session, it sounds like.
Interesting in a good way?
I hope so. There's, there've been, yes, I mean, I think, I'm hoping it will be good, but there are a few things that we're going to have to keep our eyes on, so.
Okay, good to know.
That's it. A little bit of football. That's about it. Went down to Evanston.
Jody?
Hi, yeah, I actually, I did the same thing. I attended the school recalibration. And I, again, I was, I was, it was interesting to see that timeline. I remember going to a national board meeting when I first came on the board, and it gave the, a timeline for when they started education and the responsibilities of an educator to where it started, in the one-room schoolhouse, to where it is. And man, you guys get, you have a list longer than you are tall of things to do, and I wanted to say thank you because of what you do for kids. My husband and I, like I said and mentioned last time, we've been sitting in on, or going in and volunteering as help in the lunchroom at Willow, and it's been enlightening. And if any of you have an opportunity to do that, it's really fun to get a go, and I hadn't been out on a recess duty in I don't know how long, but I did one today. And it was, it was really, it was really interesting and super fun. I enjoy the kids. And then I also, we traveled to Green River to watch the football game, and then spent the weekend enjoying the autumn colors at the cabin. And then I went to the rainy game on Monday, which was the JV game, and watched that through the first half, and I commend that team, both teams, for being out there in the downpour of rain. But it was kind of funny and reminiscent of, my son said his favorite game that he ever played in was in Natrona, and it was during a downpour like that. It was a grass field, and it was really muddy because when you hit somebody, you could slide for fifteen yards. So, we went and watched that, and that was really fun. Outside of that, I think that's about it for me.
Thank you. Carl?
Not much. I was at the Holiday Inn today, and the student council training and what, for portion, I guess, the west part of the state, Evanston. There was a bunch of schools there, and I mean, there was a ton of kids.
Oh, yeah.
And it was fun to watch them for a few minutes, just hanging out there. Scope, maybe, you know, is, this is for a memorial. I don't know. Seems, seems larger than what we had sort of aimed at.
Originally intended, yes.
Yeah, but that's the way committees go. Other than that, next week is the Wyoming Activities Association Board of Directors Meeting. So I'll be attending that, and then the School Board Association Board of Directors are the next week. So, I've got a couple of meetings that I'll be going to to report back to you on.
Cool.
That's it.
Christina?
I do have something.
Excellent.
I know. So I shared with all of you our mini PD that is available. I would love if you can come to one, two, three, whatever you can fit in. The idea behind that was, we have district literacy, math, PD committees, and one of the things that they've talked about is, how do we leverage the expertise we have in our own building, in our own district? We have a lot of staff that have training beyond us just bringing in somebody. And so, we got this idea together and said, hey, we've got these three district-level PD days. Let's make them relevant. Let's utilize the expertise we have. When we sent out a survey, we got tons of respondents, people that responded back, and essentially said, I'd love to teach a session. Right now, we have forty sessions signed up, about forty, and you can go on there and you can see all the different sessions and the descriptions of them, which means we can essentially, at this point, if we offered them for every single session, it'd be about eight hundred people. The initial survey that I sent out to you is to gauge interest. So if we have fifty people signing up for a session, we know we got to offer it more than once. And so that's the initial. Once that initial goes out and we gauge how many people want those sessions, we'll decide how many times we can offer them. I'm going to send out another survey of when those are offered. Once it reaches capacity, it'll be crossed out. It'll automatically do that. There's an add-on that you can put on Google Form that will recognize when you get to that twenty-twenty-five, and then they'll have to choose a different session. But that's our plan. And so, right now, it's been a lot of work, but I have a great committee. Honestly, I haven't, not done it alone by any means. They've done tremendous job just getting people interested, getting people signed up, and then now asking for staff to start signing up. So, we're excited. We know there's going to be hiccups, but we'll, we have two more times to get it right after this one. So, we do have food trucks, we have dosolitos, we have the rolling truck wagon, and then eat all day so that afterwards our staff can go and get a meal right there. It's RMS. We're going to try to do it all there. Aziz and Brady have been great to work with. We'll get maps so everyone will know their session. They'll, once they do their survey, they'll be able to print off the sessions they signed up for, or have it on their phone, whatever works for them. And then when they go, they'll know where it's at, and hopefully it goes off without a hitch.
I have a question.
Yeah.
So, you know, I spend a lot of time with littles during the day, my grandkids. Is there any way, because I would like to go to them, but I can't attend them, that you could, like, video them or, and then put them out there on a forum so we could watch them at any time, so when I'm in the afternoons or evenings? Just a thought. And if you can't do it in the first set of them that you do, maybe by the last time you do this, you'll get, you know, you have a handle on things.
Video library would be fantastic.
It would be fantastic. Look at you guys.
Yeah.
I know, I love it.
We're always with your ideas.
No, I love it. Yeah, I think that some of that will definitely be a possibility. It'll be obviously comfort level for some of them, but I also think depending on what they're using, I think some of the AI could be difficult to video, but why not try it? I think that's a great idea.
I think it would be helpful.
Yeah.
And I'd use it with my grandson.
Yeah, we did a video cafe with National Garden Clubs for the same kind of thing, and you could go out later and pick up those, and it really is pretty cool.
The AI could be, actually, it could be embedded, couldn't it?
I don't, I don't know enough.
Because all the keystrokes could be, and then, and then the screen.
Showing on screen?
You're getting very technical.
Do we have an?
I'm like.
Look at these guys, look at.
They're not even.
Do we have an?
That's a big ask. Yes, thank you. I could tell. I could see your expression.
I, no, I like that idea, though, honestly.
And maybe if there's even, like, high school students that could be, is that as, you know, something that academically they could be doing for a class that they have? I don't know. Just an idea.
Well, I appreciate it. Yeah, and it's anything, it's something we can continue to grow and as we get, so, no, thank you. That's a great idea. Appreciate it.
Yep.
It's hard to pick a session.
Yeah.
Not very.
I know. I know. I'm kind of, I'm still down to the, I'll, here we go.
Well, it's, I'm.
Have a few checked on.
I'm excited. I think staff to be able to, number one, present, but then also get it from your staff that had, under note, like, they understand what you're going through, what are unique attributes of our district. So, what a great opportunity. It's not someone coming in who's trying to figure it out. I mean, they know.
It creates a collaboration and communication across the district, I think.
Great idea.
And we're using our expertise instead of paying whatever we pay to have somebody come in from Zimbabwe to teach a class.
Yes, and we originally sent out a survey, and it's a lot of surveys, but we sent out one originally to say, what do you need? So those sessions were grown from our staff. And then we said, okay, this is what they need. We went back to our math team, our literacy team, which is represented by grade levels from across the district. And they said, okay, here's what we can present based on that. So every, we tried to use as much information from our original survey to build those out. And then now we'll gauge interest again to see how many we have to offer.
As I glanced and went down through with the selection and actually who they had there, doing the present, you know, presenters and everything, it was interesting to me to see the wide range of areas and individuals who are offering the training, and I just, I really liked that.
We have teachers that have a lot of experience. They've been in education a long time, and we have brand-new teachers. So for them to step up and just that wide range of experience and knowledge and have different take on education is phenomenal. So I was really proud to see how many people were willing to step up and do that.
It highlights the expertise that we have, that we've built and hired and brought on.
And we sent people, we sent people to all kinds of places.
Yes, boy. I appreciate you saying that because the idea is, one of the things that Jody and I've worked on is now when, and we send people to national conferences, and we've been, we have a PD committee that we developed last year, and they go through, and we have a timeline of what, what is needed. And then we, we have a rubric to decide. So people, staff goes in and they put in a proposal, and then that committee gets together and goes through that proposal. And so really, that has made a big difference, and what is part of that is if they are selected to go to a national conference, they will come back and present at the PD. That's, that's really great. So who is invited to attend those sessions? Is it just school district folks and the board, or preschools, or? We, as of, I didn't know what this was going to look like, so I kept it within our district. Okay. As we get a better understanding and capacity and things like that, I think we can start expanding that. I just honestly, Lori, it was so, the whole thing was like, okay, how are we going to do this?
I just know that some of my staff attended some of the school district when I was with CDS, and.
Got you.
We just don't, there was, there's very minimal funding for training for those folks, and so anytime they can attend training, it's not, doesn't cost us anything would be, that would be wonderful, so.
No, I appreciate you saying that.
Would benefit us in the long run.
It would.
No, it really would.
Help grow the district, too.
No, I appreciate that. That's a really, really good idea, so thank you. Appreciate the feedback.
Roy?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah, so we, we had a great turnout at our last family night for Native American education. We had over fifty parents and students show up. So we packed the library at the high school. So we're very excited to get the parents engaged, and we want to continue that momentum. So, we're having our second family night of the month, next, or I guess in a couple of days, on Thursday. So, we are gearing it more toward literacy, so we're having a literacy bingo fam, family fun nights where the prize, if you will, will be books that the students can take home and use in their household. In addition to that, we'll, we'll have a Title VI parent committee meeting so that we can continue to tailor the programming to what the parents want. And so we're really excited about that. In, I think in a couple of weeks, JOM will have their first official parent meeting of the year as well. So we're just going to keep rolling with the momentum and try to keep the parents engaged for the, for the school year.
Where is your literacy family night?
It'll be at Willow Creek. It'll start at six.
Do you know what time it's?
At six.
Six?
Yep, yep. And dinner will be provided for the attendees at that.
All right.
Thank you for driving that and making those things happen.
And between now and when I see you at the next board meeting, we are taking a handful of staff members to the National Indian Education Association Conference in Spokane, Washington, and this is part of identifying, a part of addressing the priority of getting more staff developments in Native American education for our staff. So, this time around, it'll be primarily focused on the high school level. So we'll take a group of students, a group of staff there to learn more about educating high school students in culturally relevant ways, and so we're excited to do that. It'll be, it'll, it'll butt right up against our next PD, so at a future PD, we'll, we'll come back and present to the staff and share the knowledge that's. At a future PD, we'll, we'll come back and present to uh the staff and share the knowledge that's.
That'd be great.
That would be great. I'd, I'd be interested in that. First people to sign up, right?
Joel, do you have anything for us? Nothing, okay. Um, I'm excited about the mini PD stuff. We were talking with Jody, and she was talking about she went to, what meeting was that that you went to?
I went to a National Superintendent's Conference.
And they talked about AI, correct? And I was going, man, we need to get that in front of people that can use it, and. I really think it's important to that we engage with AI in the school district. Um, it's kinda scary, like you alluded to or said, uh, but it's not going away. Our kids are just gonna be that much farther behind the longer it takes us to.
I would note this, that now in courts, briefs have been stricken because people just have AI trap briefs.
Oh, boy.
Oh, man, and then they, they don't review them. Of course, AI is not sentient thought. I mean, it will just take cases that. Appear to follow a certain chain.
Yeah.
They don't really hold that. So they've had several cases struck in the Tenth Circuit now as a briefs. So it is kind of a, I mean, it's a double-edged sword. It's too easy to begin relying upon it completely. You get them, someone gets in a pinch on a particular project, and I think it's real easy just to. You know, let it take over, but it, it cannot reproduce human thought yet.
Hopefully, that never happens.
We do have a group of s- six staff members that are going to the F E T C conference, and that's, it relies heavily on. A lot of technology, AI is gonna be a big one, and so that group that's going will also be presenting at the next, not this PD, cause they're going afterwards. But they'll present at the next one.
What is F E T C? Please. What is it?
Future Education Technology Conference.
Thank you. But, so we do have six going for that. And they'll be presenting some of the newest stuff, so.
Okay. Jody?
My turn. Uh, so tonight, we have our Mercer study.
Yeah.
Um, on as an action item, and I was asked um. By the State Facilities Commission, because we feel really confident I will be at Thursday's um facility. School Facility Commission meeting. I will attend that in Lander, um, just uh to talk about the process and. The um Shelby Carlson feels very confident that the commission is on board with it. But the, the big deal will be on October twenty-seventh, when we go to the um. Select Committee Meeting in Casper, so I'll be doing that, and one of the things that I'll presenting, be presenting is the history of the whole Mercer study. The whole project, including the tac demo back to two na- thousand nineteen. Um, when we started the first Mercer study for the district, which I wasn't here for, but I ha- I do have a copy of it and I read it. And so um basically, in a nutshell, I'm not gonna bore you with my full information, but in a nutshell. In two thousand nineteen, um, they did a diagnostic initial remedy for the Mercer study. Um, and it revealed large amounts of unfunded square footage, and then it came up with the recommendation to remove tac, which then led to. The wrestling room addition and the moves that we did and the renovation of Frontier Academy or Alternative School, which became Frontier Academy, and then Special Services. Going to the Career Center, and then Bosie's moving to Rendezvous, um, et cetera. Then we did our two-year reconfiguration plan that happened a little faster than any of us probably thought it was going to. I think when we first started talking about it, we thought.
Right.
It would take a little bit longer, but the community was on board with it, so we rolled. Um, we closed Ash Grove and sold it with that. Um, we're now at a K five configuration for all three schools, which led us to request another Mercer study. Because the facility that our K five is in is a junior high, and was originally built as a junior high.
Right.
So explaining that whole process to that select committee will be very important for them to understand that we did this. Um, in order to alleviate our excess square footage, but at the same time. It became more than just a capacity issue, it became a building usage issue. Um, because that building isn't necessarily designed for the use that we're doing at this point in time. So the current Mercer study came up with several plans. If you remember, very quickly, uh. We touched on that they had added Frontier and the fact that they had found that there was some issues. Uh, with capacity there, but then we asked for that to be separated out, so that we could move faster with the elementary study. So we went back to a focus just on what our needs are to make a K five elementary school. We looked at renovating, um. Several different renovation options for Rendezvous. They looked at um. Renovating Jackson and doing a di- an addition to Aspen or Willow Creek, and they looked at um building a new school. So as we were presented with last week, the most cost-effective remedy is for us to build a new school in that same area. Using the property that we already own as a district um to keep with the neighborhood school, so. That um is the recommendation, and that is the action item that we have is for um the board. If they so agree to move to have consensus with um that, and it's written in there, I don't know the exact wording. So, do you have any questions for me on the Mercer study? It's actually been a, a pleasure to work with the state. Um, in designing this, they have really gone forward on our behalf. A lot faster than I thought that they were going to. They see that we are working with them hand in hand and trying to do. What's in the best interest of our taxpayers and also what's in the best interest of our students, so um, I don't know. Shelby, do you wanna add anything to any of that, or?
Uh, thank you, Superintendent. I don't think so. I think you did a very nice job, and um I appreciate that his, that will help us. As we uh move forward with a select committee, if we uh get concurrent and can move a project forward.
Okay, thank you.
I'd take, I'd take any questions if anybody else has questions.
Anybody have question?
Just uh, so it's forty-two million for a two-hundred-and-eighty student building, is that?
Did you hear, he's asking, is it forty-two million for a two-hundred-and-eighty? Student building?
So it's two-hundred-and-twenty students. And um the construction total is basically thirty million, twenty-nine point nine million. It costs us about three-point-two million to do the design. Um, and so the cost is thirty-three point one million is what we have in the, in the request. We did remove the demolition, although it shows in the cost estimate, and I believe it was one-point-six million or thereabout. Um, we did remove that because we want to wait until the Mercer study for the Frontier Academy completes. And we know what that is, so in case um that building becomes an option, is still available. We will go back and ask for demo funds um in the future, if the decision is to go ahead and demo the old rendezvous. So you're looking at about thirty-three point one million dollars for the new two-hundred-and-twenty student school.
Thank you.
Shelby, this is Lynette Jeffries. I just wanted to say thank you for all your work and your committee's work on this. Um, it's a lot to take in. I, and, but it's amazing um information, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so um that's the first thing that's up on my agenda is to do that. Um. The Frontier Move, um, at, I sent out an email letting you know that we decided to move forward with that. Because of our staffing needs, and it will, it will better meet the needs of our students and staff all around. So we have an amazing, um, like Christina has mentioned, and you have mentioned, not only our teaching staff and, you know. Amazing, but our maintenance staff, our custodial staff, some of our teaching staff instructional coaches have pitched in. To help with this transition, and then we were short-staffed a little bit, and people rearranged their schedule. I think Roy took some shifts, Christina took some shifts. I was out of town, so I didn't, but I would have taken some shifts, just doing some coverage um to make sure that we were meeting the needs of our kids in those programs. Um, and I'm met with the Fremont County Superintendents, and we talked a little bit last week about the Bosie's. And um all of us were in agreement that that mental health and behavior support is something we do need from the Bosie's. Not saying that we wanna take away the CTE component, but giving that extra option is important to us. And so they're all going to be talking to their boards about that, and we're gonna come up with a proposal for that, um, which could truly help support this. Um, Jackson School, if that's what it ends up being after another Mercer study is done, if that's the direction we go, so. Um, those are, those are good things that are happening, and you know, I appreciate like Matt Leclaire and Cindy. I can't remember Cindy's last name, Mills, thank you.
Yep.
I don't know why her last name left, but they are really working hard to support this transition and cleaning the building and getting it ready for kids to be in. In an unexpected time, so, so that um, that is great. Uh, it was, I did wanna mention that while it is only September, um, October is right around the corner. And our board eval and my superintendent evaluation will be coming up, so we probably want to start thinking about. Work sessions and times that you want to get together to start doing those things. I do still want to adjust how we do those. Um, and I talked with Terry and Bruce about that, so I will give you a updated, this might be. A more productive tool for us and help us grow more than the current tool that we're using. And I plan to have that for you before we go forward with our processes this year.
Thank you.
Um.
Yeah, I don't think any of us really like the tool we're using now.
No, it's not, actually, it's just cumbersome.
Yeah, good word.
Well, it doesn't give you, I feel, really good feedback for you.
Right, right.
It doesn't.
And that's how I feel about it, too, is it's, um, so we would like, we're working on our evaluation process. Christina had a meeting with all of the administrators last Tuesday and talked through some adjustments that we made to that. And I'd like to make it for the principals as well, because their tool is. Just as awkward, so.
It would be nice to have something a little more universal as well, too.
Yep, so, um, that is all I have for this evening.
Okay, thank you. So, we have an opportunity for the public to comment or to address the board. Of trustees regarding action items on the agenda. Um, so if anyone would like to address the board or make a comment, feel free. I know you wanna make a comment, go ahead.
Well, I'm glad, we're happier here.
We don't usually have spectators, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
You're right.
No one wants to speak?
I will.
Okay.
I'm Megan Richardson. I'm a social worker at Aspen, and I just wanna say thank you for hiring Mr. McBride. He is so wonderful. He is out in the building, he is just, it's just a breath of fresh air, and I'm just really thankful for him, and thank you for hiring him. It's been a really great, great start to our year, so thank you for that.
Well, thank you, thank you. Thank you for being here.
Sporting Aspen, right?
Yeah, that's right. Go Eagles.
That can sometimes be a tough thing to do, to stand up there and say thanks for, you know.
Thank you.
I appreciate that. Good.
We're glad.
I'm Tierney. Um, I was here at the last meeting, um, but I wanted to thank you all for um your consideration and your thoughts about. The Interact Club, and I hope that um we can get a decision and continue to keep moving forward. But thank you all for um your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tierney, for speaking.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Anyone else? All right, we're gonna move on to action items. The first one is to consider an administrative recommendation to approve an out-of-state travel request.
Mr. Chair, I would move the board approve Riverton High School FCC LA students to travel to Washington DC. In November twenty-twenty-five for the FCC LA Capital Leadership Conference as per policy.
Second.
Any discussion? My only discussion is they kinda come to the meetings about as much as we do.
I think it's awesome.
I haven't been not complaining. I, I want them to come back and tell us again what went on.
Absolutely.
Be, I was, I was impressed with their presentation last time. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we will approve that travel. Consider an administrative recommendation to approve change orders.
Mr. Chair, I would move the board approve the two change orders for the Riverton High School Auditorium Project. From the State Construction Department with Top Office Products Inc. of Sheridan, Wyoming. Both change orders are for FFNE components in the total amount of thirty-four thousand nine-hundred-ten dollars.
Second. Discussion?
That pretty much supply the building or these?
So we have a wish list that's a little bit larger than that, um, that um Ed and I will be going through. I think we've talked about it a couple of times, and now that this has been. Um, this list has been approved through the State Department. We'll go through the rest of our list that will have to come out of our district funds.
So for clarity, what's FFNE?
I don't know what it stands for.
It's the stuff that goes in it.
I knew it was furniture, but.
Furniture fixtures and is it equipment? Wow. For once, I was right.
Make those things up.
Is that a deduction on somebody's taxes?
That is a deduction.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we will approve that change order. And consider an administrative recommendation to acknowledge and accept the Mercer study recommendation.
Mr. Chair, I would move that the board um concur with the Stasis Design Team Recommendation Scenario Number A-one. Construction of a new K-five elementary school to replace the existing Rendezvous Elementary School as the most cost-effective remedy.
Second.
Discussion?
Um, I, you know, I have heartburn. Uh, it's, whenever you're dealing with the state and the legislature, it's always so. You know, we've got a finite dollar that we get.
Yep.
And then inflation.
Reduces its effectiveness.
Does this and the.
So it, it's all of a sudden goes from that two-hundred-and-twenty, which seems like a very small building to me. And the word cost-effective is another word I don't like. I'd rather it be education effective, and the terms in the stu- uh, when they're explaining it to us. In a more modern, uh, up-to-date, so they're prescribing the, the education. Methods that they're, that we need to change to. So local control is no longer in the. It's all about money, and we've been driven by facilities since I can't say when. It's, it's, we're always driven by facilities. We make decisions about student learning based on buildings. Sometimes more than best practices in education. Uh, and when a state entity tells us that they're telling, you know, that they are building a building. That will teach our kids better, I have some pushback on that and have a bunch of wonder. Uh, so I can't really support it. I, I won't vote against it, but I don't know if I can vote for it.
So I guess my question to you would be.
I'd like.
What would you see different? What would you like to be different about it?
I just don't know, I didn't, how much of you, what do you know about these practices? How many rooms do we need for when? How many rooms do we need for uh SEL? How many rooms, how much space do we need for the things that we do that will go away? Because the facility won't hold them.
Won't support them?
Won't support them.
So my understanding is that that isn't even talked about till the design phase. They give us this square footage and this dollar amount. And then we are able to determine what our needs are within that. Um, when I spoke with the state, they were very flexible, and I pointed out that our needs are very unique. Because we are at a twenty percent special education, or twenty-one percent, I believe, and I think they pointed that out, that they actually added. And I think they pointed that out, that they actually added twenty-thousand square feet or more to the building for that, because we pointed it out. And so, I think, I'm just pleased that we're at the first stage of getting through to get a building, and then when it comes down to the design, I think we'll have that ability to negotiate. Because if we decide it's more important, and Nicole's been at the table for, for these as well, if we decide it's more important um to have, instead of having the modern common area space to have uh an intervention classroom, then that is up to us to determine at the time.
And, and then, then my concern also is that shrink, shrinking finite dollar. That's what happened to the uh auditorium.
Yeah, so Shelby, correct me if I'm wrong, but didn't you build in a, build that in because of the, into the cost? Wasn't that built in because we knew that we wouldn't be building right away?
That's correct. If you were to look at the um, at the document, um, there was, the part, the twenty-twenty-five cost was thirty-point-nine million. Our estimate and what we're moving forward to the sele- uh, to the Select Committee and the Governor uh, that will go on to JAC and the Legislature, is thirty-three-point-one million um to accommodate for inflation uh, while the project is designed, and then uh before we can go out to bid. Um, we did add additional square footage um due to the special needs. Um, that was actually two-thousand-five-hundred-and-thirty-three s- extra square feet. And, and Jody's correct, we um, you know, we hire a consultant that understands educational programming. Um, Stasis spent a lot of time working with the district and, and how they use their educational space. But once you get into the design process, one of the very first things you do is work with your consultants on the educational programming that you need to put in your school, and then you work within um the, that square footage that we have established. And in general, what we see um is that the square, we're very generous with the square footage we give. Um, we actually have one school that's under construction right now, it was designed for, supposed to be forty kids, and they'll have seats for ninety-nine. Um, so, you know, at all, the, 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 the local control is all there, and the district has a lot of control over how they use that square footage. And, and to your point, they're the educators, we're not, we're builders. Um, but we put um all that, you know, into the cost and the budget, and then we allow the district to do that through the design process.
So, when, when the Mercer study was, as taking place, I just kinda want some clarity, so I understand it, um, a little clearer myself. And it was, we looked at declining enrollments, right? Um, and we know that that's what it looks like, but things can roll through and can change differently. And when you get to that, like this is the beginning stage, my question would be, you said that the local control and the flexibility is there, would it be at that time that those educators would be able to walk through all the buildings, again, walk through, look in the classrooms, see what we have there, see what we're doing, seeing how many kids are there? And if that amount of square footage in those classrooms available are really gonna fit what, what our population is and can become?
It's all a trend line, right now, it's all a negative trend line, which is like seventy kids a year for the last three years. So, that negative trend line is what they loo- are looking at.
Right.
So, they're not looking at that, that trend line's gonna change.
But my, like I said, one, I don't know, I guess maybe my concern is I don't wanna have to overstuff the, the sardine can.
That's my-
And up the, you know what I mean, that's, that's where I was coming from.
And how many of these, you know, that building that you were just talking about that uh is being built right now? What, how close was it to the bid estimate?
You know, it uh did come in a bit high over the bid estimate. Um, we worked pretty hard with that district um to, to cut costs and um cut some of those things back. Um, it still ended up needing to dip into some of the unanticipated funds. So, when we um did a project, on every project, because you, any of you that do construction know you always encounter certain things you don't plan for, whether it's in your foundation or whatever. There is six percent unanticipated funds that are put there to help us um, you know, adjust to those unforeseen needs if they occur. You know, we don't use them very often, our cost estimates are usually uh pretty good. I think there was a question regarding the enrollment um as well, and I was having just a little bit of trouble hearing, but as we, it did project the declining enrollment, that is pretty much across the state right now, we are seeing declining enrollment almost everywhere. And this is really a nationwide trend, uh, birth rates are just down nationwide. That being said, um, every year, we as an agency are required to run two schedules for the annual report that goes to um the Select Committee and School Facilities, our commission, and the Legislature and the Governor. And we look out eight years, so if there is a turnaround in your enrollment, and, you know, influx comes, uranium really takes off, those types of things, the minute that uh enrollment starts to project up, and we use a ten-year cohort um trailing data to look at, the minute that starts to turn up, that will change that enrollment projection. And when it shows out eight years that you're gonna be hitting a hundred percent, that then triggers us to come in and do another most cost-effective remedy study to address capacity.
The other side of that is that we're taking money now out of the Education Fund for Buildings, which used to be taken care of by coal bonus money. And so, the projected deficit in the school foundation is now in the uh thirty, you know, twenty-thirty budget will be in a negative, so. It, 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 it's uh, it's complex for us that are actually doing kids, where you're building buildings, we have to worry about some of these things that are unpredictable. But trend lines tell us that that's going to happen because you're now dipping in, using facility to, to get your facility money, almost three-hundred million this year, out of the school foundation fund. And I know that's a political uh problem, but it's not solved. And we, you've been talking about all these bills that these guys are talking about, and this is a budget session. What the heck, there's talking, they should be working about their budgets rather than this minutia of, of things that aren't anything about, and they didn't even pass a budget last year. So, that's why I have so much quandary about what the state gives us, and I know you can't address some of that.
Yeah.
I'll quit.
Thank you Shelby.
You bet.
Thanks Shelby.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Staying?
Any opposed? Hearing none, we will, I'd move forward with that recommendation. Um, consider an administrative recommendation to accept a grant.
Mr. Chair, I would move the board accept the Fremont County BOSI's preschool grant in the amount of ten-thousand dollars for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six school year.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we will accept that grant. And consider an administrative recommendation to offer a contract.
Mr. Chair, I move the board to offer a contract to Kelly Guard as a Riverton High School Assistant Cheer Coach effective for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six school year.
Second.
Discussion?
She's an ever-ready battery.
She is, she just goes, oh my god.
She just goes and goes, it's so deserved, husband.
Yes.
Yeah.
We're fortunate.
I assume that's means that, that's an endorsement. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we will offer that contract. So, we have some information items. The twenty-twenty-five annual Wyoming School Board Association Conference is November twenty-first, or nineteenth through the twenty-first. And notify Jada if you wanna go before the fifteenth of October. I wanna go.
I do too.
Who doesn't wanna go?
I won't go for one of the nights, I'll probably go the first-
I don't wanna go.
It's just I have-
I'll stay for Thursday or Friday.
For continuing Ed that I have to do.
Oh, my lord, you can come later, right?
It's three days.
Oh, jeez.
I know, I about cried.
You scheduled that wrong.
I did. She was, she was the person in charge.
I'm not going either, I have littles.
I wanna go, it's my favorite thing to do every year.
It is, I'm, I'm teaching him every day, he, he knows his alphabet and his numbers already, and he's only two.
I'll have to find out if they'll let me, what days they'll let me leave for, during open enrollment, so.
Okay, sounds good.
Yeah, cause they're killing it. It's always, you could do some planning.
It's kind of a busy time for me, so.
Revised Policy five-three-zero-five, Classified Professional and Support Staff Work Agreements and Compensation. Classified staff changes, we have some resignations, Special Services OT Para Shauna, Little Shield, effective August fifth, Willow Creek Para Kaylee McCauley, effective September fifth, RMS Para Leah Williams, effective September twenty-sixth. Transfer uh Alexa Noland to Aspern, Aspen Para. New hires Bryn Karen Wells as a bus, transportation bus aide.
You missed a line.
You missed a line.
Oh.
Bryn Gardner.
I jumped one, didn't I?
Yeah, you did, it's okay.
Uh, Bryn Gardner as a Willow Creek Para, Eliza Anderson as an Aspen daycare assistant, Karen Wells as a transportation bus aide, Jacob Waldziger as a maintenance floater cus- custodian, Grayson Beasley as a maintenance floater custodian, and there's a separation notice in the executive content. How's our enrollment doing?
Fifty-six.
Fifty-six? Down?
It's trending, oh.
It's better than the one-
Better than the seventy that I quoted.
Exactly.
Yeah.
All right, anything else for the good of the board? Hearing nothing? Word's done, all right.
All righty.